Well, I've got 4:30. I think Dr. Duncan looked at me a minute ago. So, for those that are here, this is just simply a work session prior to us submitting our budget to the commissioners. We will be conducting any business as such once we'll have a meeting for, I think, for our dinner. Then we'll be meeting in the gymnasium for the actual board meeting tonight, which will start at 6 o'clock. Like I said, this is just simply a budget work session that we're going to enter into. So, Dr. Duncan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breelove. The last time we met was on, I think, the 25th of February, and we had put a lot of things up on the board in the office there, talking about possible cuts to the budget for the upcoming year, realizing that we're going to have to have more than the county provided us last year, substantially more, to get out of this year, and then also to go into next year. So, we were trying to look at the current expense budget, which means local budget for us, where we're spending money. This didn't include every single one of them, but it included, I'd say, about 98 percent, probably, of the local monies of where we're spending it. And that list at that particular time was quite lengthy, and you all had that. You may have a copy of that now. I don't know if you do or not, but that amounted to cuts of about $1,009,503. So, by using all of that money, we would reduce our request to the county substantially down to $85,000, $86,000. Looking over that list, obviously, there were a lot of areas that were of concern when we put them up on the list, various kinds of things. So, what I did was I went back, and I, Dr. Baldwin and I met, Angie and I, we sat down and talked for a number of hours, a couple of different times, and developed a list that basically was looking at everything that had direct teacher-student contact, and tried to basically put that back in. So, the things that went back into that were, we talked about the Macon Early College, that was a direct contact with students. And we were putting a substantial amount of money in there, but they also get a state grant. And my hope is that they can live within the framework of that grant, and that we won't have to supplement them hardly at all, if any, in terms of the current expense. But, you know, that still may be, may have to do that possibly. Union Academy, they also received direct state dollars from the act risk funds, and so that was a substantial amount of money. And if they can live within that with us not going into the local, then that would be preferable to do that. But both of those contacts were $200,000, which actually are direct contact with students. So, we moved that out and didn't put that, moved that out of the cut possibility at this point. Now, keep in mind, what you're getting today is some ideas, or an idea of a way we might approach this. And we've had some discussions, individually and separately, and this type of thing. I've talked with the chairman at length about some things, and we're at the process now of trying to get closer to what we might propose as a budget that goes forward to the county commission. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with their staff, and Angie and Chris and I will sit down based upon what you all have asked us to do tonight, to carry that forward. But, you know, keep in mind that it will be the board's budget, basically, supported by the staff, because you are the ones that actually have to make the decisions as to what goes in and what doesn't stay and go in.
If you want, refresh that memory is that the commissioners want the budget, if you would.
Prior to April 15.
April 15, is what I'm saying. So, we'll have this. We may have to have another special call meeting for those board members once we, after Dr. Duncan said a chance to meet with Mr. Horton and them prior to us actually submitting the budget.
Right, so. Now, we, you know, we have not talked at all since, I don't know, a month or so ago about capital outlay. And my assumption at this time is that we would leave it as, you know, as a request. I think it was $347,000 for the total amount of requests on capital outlay. Some of that has just, has dropped down just because there have been some donations to supplement some of the, I think we got a real more donated, Chris, at the high school, which was 12 or so thousand dollars that would have, so that total now is like $334,000. So, if there's, we'll still have to come back and adopt it, but there hasn't been much discussion, Mr. Breelove, since we proposed that, obviously, and didn't do everything we needed to do, but, and it does not address the safety issues that was brought to our attention by the county commissioner. If we want to go back and add a separate line item in for safety items, then maybe we could do that, but, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to give us $500,000 to, you know, to place all the cameras that we need to in every single school.
Do we have, does anyone remember that, or do you have, have you ever gotten a copy of what we had talked about, board members, the 340? Did anyone ever see that final list?
Yeah.
I think we sent it out. Everybody get that?
Right.
Okay. I want to make sure that everybody remembered, in case it's not, we can make a copy of it. Go from there.
And it's, it's down to about 334 now, because that more that was donated in the high school was about 12,000 or so dollars. So, that would have.
They had donated.
Yeah. Very much appreciate it. Okay. So, sort of moving off that, but that's something that when we talk with Jack and Laurie tomorrow, we'll have that list there, and we may have, it just depends on how things go. I mean, if we're asking for that amount of money in capital outlay, and we can't get what we need in current expense, then we may have to take less in capital outlay. So, back a couple of days ago, we looked at this, and we put some things back into the budget. One, I was making early college, other was Union Academy, the other was putting the middle school athletics back in there. One of the areas where there was direct contact with students, and not, not really want to cut that as much as we, much as we probably need to, but, but looking at that. So, that brought that list down to the current list of $1,116,359. Now, what you have, and most of you have it in front of you, and tonight, if you want to, here's kind of the way it goes. If you want to add something to the possible cut list, then we will add it. If there's something on this list that you think needs to be over, that needs to be funded, we hope all of this will be funded, but if you think there's something on this list that needs to be not on the cut list, then we need to talk about that. And obviously, there are some areas there that may be some concern. The 11 teacher positions that we'd like to absorb, that, it's not going to be the easiest thing, but, but that can be done. We, when you look at the number of staff members that we currently have related to the number of students that we have, it's pretty much out of whack. I did a little study about 12 different school systems around the area, and I'll give you that information, but I had one revision on it that I didn't, that I needed to do before I actually gave it to you. But, you know, we're substantially more staff than the predominant school systems around us, especially at the high schools levels. We have very, very little that we can do about the Natahala and maybe even the Highlands situation, but at the high school in Franklin, there are some areas where we need to reduce staff because just of low numbers, and, and some other places, too. I mean, we need to look at, you have some classes that have three and four in it, and, you know, maybe they have 12 students all day long. We need to look at a little better utilization of the 50-something, 60-something thousand dollars we're putting into that position, because I don't think any business anywhere, people don't have work now. We don't just keep letting them stay. So, we have to, we have to look at that.
And I've asked you, I know I've asked you about 30 times, but I'm going to ask you again, and continue to say about those 11 positions. Again, you are saying that those are positions that are not like somebody that's been here on and on, that has already, they are not somebody that has been in the system continually.
The only way it would affect somebody that has been is if a school, for example, were to have every person that would be on a contract, that was a multi-year contract, and we would have to transfer them. We don't anticipate, these are positions that right now are covered by interims and retirements.
So, at this point, you are, nobody in those positions are somebody that has been within the school system, and currently is in a position, has been there, we're talking about, again, interns or retirements?
Generally, Ms. McCall, I'd say that, I mean, we may have to move some, if we've got, for example, an elementary situation that is way over, out of whack, we may have to move that person maybe to a middle school position if they're certified, or they may have to take the praxis. It's not my intention that anybody that's, that has a permanent position would be dropped.
But, you say it's not really the intention, but you want to give an example of Lita Elementary Teacher, even though she might not be elementary educated, because, I mean, an elementary educated teacher is probably not going to be comfortable possibly leaving into the middle school. So, you're telling me that is possible? So, this is a different answer than what it has been in the past, so that's why I'm, you know.
Well, we've accounted for four positions, four positions at the high school, two positions at the middle school, two positions at Mountain View, and three positions at the elementary level, which makes us a total of 11. And under that scenario, we would not be using someone who has been in positions a long period of time, that they would lose their job. Now, we have, we've got two issues here. We've got interim teachers that will be no problem in terms of saying that, that you're not going to have a job. Probationary teachers is something that we have to look at, because it, I mean, it's really up to the board, whatever, but if you don't make some movement toward reducing the staff issue, you're, I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to be funded at the level that you've been funded at. It's just not going to happen, because the state stings you about it, they're taking money back. And I'm not so sure that, if we've got open positions that we can get by without taking somebody who's been working a long time and sending them home, I think it's, you know, that's not good. But these 11 positions did not suppose any of that. And if we just, and right now, if we reduced three in the elementary schools, and I don't know where it would be, because we've got a lot of elementary schools, and if we reduce two, and we're going to have, well, two at the middle school level, at Macon Middle School, and two at Mountain View, and the high school has several interims. Now, we have to look again at the high school as to how we're going to arrange those positions, because in some departments, we don't have any people who are in interims or who are retiring.
But we do have some, I mean, we have a couple of places we're talking about moving around at the high school, like I believe the student, what do you call it, student resource, student?
Student service. And if we open, if this were approved by the board, and we open school next year, with, you would not have the FHS Student Services position.
Right, and I'm sorry, I know we talked about this before, but I'm trying to make it understandable to you. What is your?
There's a possibility, there could be a reassigned position on that, correct?
Yes, I mean, that would be up to you and the board. The reason the budget is so, I guess, aggravating to deal with is that you've got state money and you've got local money. And if you have a position that could be filled by not using local money, then you can fill that. But if the position is strictly local dollars, then you have a difficulty funding it when you're trying to cut back on all of this.
But if we had a position that was state-paid, and we changed it, we could maybe move one of those local people into that state-paid job, is that not true?
That's true.
So, and student services, can you give me that job description again?
That's testing coordinator.
Testing coordinator, so, and that's what Pat Davis also does, and she has an assistant that does that also?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Well, that was to conduct, to do the test at the high school. Stephanie was at the position, so it's not.
But is that not, is Pat and her assistant not, also not, they're not involved too?
They are, but they also oversee all the tests at all the elementary schools throughout the county.
Right, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, but at the high school, it's just one of the duties there, because when, at the high for testing, you're talking about a full, how many time, what time would it spend in testing, Chris, two to three weeks?
Probably, at least.
Who does it?
Mr. Jesse.
The guidance counselor, does our guidance counselor talk about also there?
They have, they have in the past, but going forward, we probably would look at putting that with, I think what Dr. Duncan is talking about, whoever the principal is, there's some other positions that, that the testing can be moved, because now the testing, I understand, we're not having as much as what we've had in the past. Is that correct, and looking at follow-up?
Oh, it's getting worse.
It's getting worse.
The EFC testing is reduced, the common exam or MSLs has increased, so some of the.
It's a moving target.
Moving target.
But in addition to testing coordinator, involved in discipline, particularly female issues.
And is your, also your two assistants help with that also?
They do.
So, but going back to that, and I'm just asking, what about, I'm not sure, Pat Davis and there's another one, who's in that one?
Ginger Bush, she helps her.
Okay. So, could she possibly go to the schools? I mean, usually, I mean, that's what central office is, correct? They're, they're basically a resource officer for every school. So, could they be at the schools? If we need to, she's got to be moved for the loss, if they help him, or help the people that has to.
I may be out of turn here, so I apologize, ma'am. I believe we're going to go to an executive session tonight, here in the first mental situation.
Correct. Correct. So, I guess my answer to your question is that's one of the positions, that is one of the things that the student support services had been doing, was having to do the testing at the high school. I'll answer your second part about our guidance counselor. Frankly, our guidance officers can't continue to do the testing. We're under, by state standards, we're understaffed by one counselor based on the student workload that they have. So, but there, we, I think, Chris felt, and possibly Dr. Duncan, there are some other positions we have that it could be some of the, if we delete this position, they can step up and actually take on some of the testing responsibilities.
I'm going to leave it.
And I'd just like to add, too, that I miss a outstanding job, a couple of months that she's been there, we really regret that the budget's not allowed to keep her in that position.
And I understand that, I'm perfect, because I was a teacher, I don't doubt that, but that's, you know, it's nothing about who, which person, it's just.
Well, if you remember, Steph, we had the discussion when we decided to fill this position.
I know, because I actually, I was unfortunately not, I mean, you were battling against that, because I was opposed to putting her there, because.
Well, it wasn't that as much as a position, but now with what we're faced with now, lack of funding, we have to make cuts some along the way, and unfortunately, this is one of those that's.
And that's why I was opposed to it, it was lack of funding, not because I don't doubt that you need it, I was just concerned about.
That's where we're at, if we get back now, looking at terms of, it's just one of those things that we felt like.
$2 million, that's what we funded that last year, tough decision to make, long enough.
However all of this stuff works out, I mean, just from my experience, we have, we are way, I said way, if you look at all the schools in North Carolina, we are at the classroom level, high school-wise, have more staff than 95% of the schools our size. I mean, some, I mean, Pisgah High has, you know, they have 66 teachers, we have 73. Smoky Mountain has 66, we have 73, or something like that.
Okay, I know Smoky Mountain's a little smaller, but I don't know what.
It's about, exactly, it's a little larger.
A little larger, they're going to a 3A, they're, they're all 3A after this.
I did a lot of comparison, the people we play, East Henderson High School, North Henderson, West Henderson.
Okay, when you say East, you're talking about Franklin High School there, because I'm sorry, I don't know some of those schools.
Right, but also, we have to look at all the schools, because to be a decent steward of the taxpayers' running, you can't be so out of line that every year, you continue to talk about, well, we need to cut, we need to cut, and not cut. And we're at the position where we've got, I say we, I mean, I'm a part of the system at this point, to try to get a handle on that. I mean, we've got some situations where people have three and four kids all day long, and...
Well, and I agree with Dr. Duncan, that's why I'm asking these questions, because to be honest with you, I don't know who has three and four, or I don't know, I don't know what Ms. Sutton's doing, or I don't know, but I'm like you, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a mother.
But I would like to just say, too, though, that, you know, Smoky Mountain, they may have pure teachers, but they also have three assistant principals, they're, I understand, fewer, or low enrollment than Franklin High School, they have three assistants where we have two, and they also have three guidance counselors where we have two.
Do they have some, do they get some kind of funding that we don't, don't think it's a, like?
They may get low enrollment.
I don't think Smoky Mountain's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. It doesn't just come there, they have a lot of other auxiliary services out there than Franklin High School.
But the source that I use, which is available to anybody, is a North Carolina Department of Public Instruction report card, and on there, it gives you the areas, and if the place says quality teachers, and you click on that, and it gives you the exact number of classroom teachers. You can figure, and that is figured, that is not figured any administrator, that's not figured any counselor, that's not figuring any media specialist or anything of that nature. And you'll find that we are very heavily staffed in personnel, but administratively, school-wide, and district-wide for that matter, but school-wide especially, we're not overstaffed, especially for a high school that's 900 and something students. And that's.
Well, I still thought I'd ask the question, because anytime there is people that aren't there, and they're not one-on-one with students, you know, I don't know, that's why I'm asking you the question, and I expect you to tell me whether it's something I want to hear, whether it's not. I still have to ask the question, because I'm a good, I need to be a good steward, not only as a school board member, but as, I'm a taxpayer, and there's a lot of reasons. I want to, let's ask the question.
Well, no, I think, go ahead, Gary, I'm, I'm, I think what we looked at in this case, Stephanie, was, if you're weighing a teaching position that might impact students versus a student support, I think Dr. Duncan and they met was, well, where should we put our resources? And obviously, with some of our interims, we may, you know, like, I think we have two interims around the science department, well, we don't know that we can sustain that, we may have to have more. So, this is just one of those things where if you're weighing the importance, this position came in second, to possibly reserving what teaching positions, we're not talking, does that make sense?
Right, in itself, you know, I mean, that's two, well, it's about a teacher and a half in terms of that amount of money. So, anything that directly impacted.
Now, I interrupted you, Gary, what, what?
You know what I was going to share with her, the heartburn thing of this, of this thing here, at Franklin High School, two of those interim teachers are in your science, and, you know, if you take two away and not be in a hardship situation, probably not. So, now, it goes back to your question, now, if you, if you take four away from Franklin High School, who are the four that's going to be taken away, really? You know, if you can't afford to take the two, then you've got to go out, what you're saying, to go out here and find your two or something. That's the heartburn of this thing. And so, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not sure we have the answer at this time. If you have to have a science, and you're going to take four, where do you find the other two?
And I was also asked, and I could be wrong, and I'm sure somebody here will correct me if I'm not, that you got one, and I don't know people's names like you do, but you got one that's in the Odyssey program, is he a science teacher? So, is it a possibility, and I'll ask Angie about this, moving people around, where if we have somebody in these other positions that might not require as high level of, not that I'm trying to put anything lower level, but at high level pay, if you've got an assistant or a first-term teacher or something, to put him back into these other places, that science is pretty darn important.
Yeah, I think an executive session, oh, we can, sure.
But, you know, in our discussions in December and January, deciding how we want to handle this spring with those interims, we looked, we actually looked at, with Mr. Ture at that time, but if you move Mr. Ture, you want to pick up some money, but you still need to have someone to cover that layout, so you want to have the, your savings are not that great even if you move an assistant, I think, which is not being ideal.
But you're talking about money here, you're not talking about knowledge.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't put that together, the knowledge that he has, that works with those students, a teacher assistant, let's say so, I haven't seen one, that you've got a teacher assistant, can do the chemistry, do the, all of the math, and so like that. There's a knowledge level in the recovery program that can't be just replaced by a teacher assistant.
And it's kind of a. The cost benefit just wasn't that great in terms of what you lose and what you gain.
So, that teacher, you're saying, is teaching in there, they're not just, because it's a.
Well, they're available as a resource.
Yep, they do teach.
Because they don't teach, ours, they do not have any, our teacher does not, ours does not have any one-on-one teaching at all.
What's, what was it?
About $30,000.
Anyway, this is just up for discussion, we're going to ask questions, Bennett, I know that said this, Chris, you said that Smoky Mountain has less students, more administrative off people, and so how do you, how are they doing that, and their budget's no different than ours?
I don't know what the answer is, but I did.
Well, not much, I mean, I'm just thinking, if they're doing something that we feel like we need to be doing.
That's their faculty list, you can see a number of guidance officers, social workers, assistant principals, and things like that.
Well, you have to look, see, each individual school is not funded by the state or by the county. You have to look at the county as a whole. And we have situations where we are having to fund some things that maybe another county doesn't.
And really, I mean, I'm interested, maybe, yeah, right, you know.
Yeah, if you've got, if you've got three high schools the exact same size, or four, you can fund them equally, you don't have any problem. You know, there would be no reason, if we had another high school in Macon County that had 900 students, and we said there's going to be eight English teachers there, or nine English teachers, or seven, whatever it is, everybody'd have seven, because it wouldn't be any reason to do differently. Well, you've got two outlying situations here, that are flat costing you more money. That is, I mean, there's no doubt about that, when it costs 100% more to have an education for a student in that dial studio, and 75% more to have an education for students here at Highlands, now, you're going to spend more money. So, if there's, if there, if the pot is big enough, and the county would give us $2 million, you just say, "Thank you, go on," like you've always done. But I don't know that they'll do that, and I think what I'm trying to do here is to make a good faith effort, not to name people, not to name individuals or anything of that nature, but to say, "Look, you know, we can, we can." of that nature, but to say, look, you know, we can, we can produce four hundred and seventy thousand dollars with eleven teaching positions. Yeah, if, if five high school science teachers left tomorrow, we could up that to fourteen, but you wouldn't do that, because you're going to have to replace them. And we're at the point now, we just finished registrations at the schools, and so, you know, I can sit down with Dr. Baldwin and say, you know, this is, this is what I think you ought to have. Well, I'm not over there. And he can tell me, well, this is why we have to have this. So, it comes down to administrative type thing. But if we just said, we're not hiring any of the current interim's at this point, then that's the number of positions, that's approximately the amount of money that is invested in those right there. And we go through all of those positions, staff, local staff development, everybody likes to do that, people need to do that, but you got, there comes a point where you're just not able to do what we've been doing. The phone supplements, that's the money that's given to, I think, directors, and maybe there's some other people involved in that, they get phone supplements each month. That's not direct instruction impacting on the student. The savings on the, we didn't name a position here, but what I'd like to see the district do is to move to a position where we have fewer twelve-month employees, where we can actually cover it with two eleven-month employees. So, instead of having, you know, two people with, you know, recover a couple of months employees, we have a situation there, which we have a person coming in to take that position, that will get a raise because they were a former teacher assistant. And then, they may, if you cut that position, that means that, let's say, in Nantahala School this summer, instead of having one twelve-month person and one eleven-month, you'd have two eleven-month people, and they could, they could switch off on their day. And I think, and we just don't have that happening right now at some of the elementary schools and some of the other schools, but when it does, you ought to look at that.
But we have two eleven, excuse me, we have principals twelve months, custodians twelve months, and you have two eleven-month people.
Right. So, and whereas before, we had a twelve-month and an eleven-month.
You had twelve and a ten, is that right?
Twelve and eleven.
We had a twelve and a eleven, in the office.
Okay, but you've got a teacher assistant coming from a ten-month.
To an eleven.
To eleven, and the other person goes from twelve to eleven, right. So, there's, there's two people there, and they'll have eleven months, and they can switch off.
Well, actually, the data manager's eleven months, the current secretary's twelve months, she's retiring, and replaces the assistant who goes from ten to eleven. So, no one gets reduced from twelve to eleven.
Okay, right.
The position gets reduced from twelve to eleven.
Yeah, that position gets reduced, which, if you, if you're able to do that, if you've got a data manager and, and a secretary out of school, one's twelve and one's eleven, every time you make that change, you would save a month's salary to be able to do that.
So, one could be off, let's say, in July.
Oh, yeah.
And the, while the others work, and that could be, while the others work.
Right, which you've got, you've got every office covered still, you just don't have double coverage.
But you've got the school, school covered for twelve months.
Right.
With the principal, and then the custodian, then you've got two eleven-month people, then they can switch off to cover that one.
And, and Mr. Shear's, the only reason we don't have more of that in here is we don't have the summer situation that we have, that we were able to do it there. But if it were to occur tomorrow at another school, I'd be recommending the same thing. Then, the clerical and central office, we have a person retiring out of that. Instructional materials, every year, we've given instructional materials to the schools, we've divvied it out, one year it was like fifteen dollars, this past year it was like thirteen dollars. We're, we're getting actually more money from the state this year in instructional materials than we've ever had in a long time, and a good deal more. So, it would offset, it's not that we're taking materials and supplies, we may have to reduce some, but that's being replaced with state dollars, so we're not able to, we don't have to fund that this year. But keep in mind, I think, Mr. Brelo, we've all talked about this, that this is a proposed thirteen, fourteen year, I mean, we hope it gets better. Greatest thing that could happen to us is the reversion would not hit us. Software, that's eliminating the Renaissance program and the study island program, at least for this year. Some schools may continue to use some of that, but they may have to fund some of that on their own. Administrative supplements, a number of years ago, when these, when the county gave supplements for the teachers and teacher aides, that was, that was an amount of money that they, that they gave, and they continue to give that amount of money to the, to the system for a two percent supplement, which is, it's about a hundred and second in the state, it's like, average is eight, eight, about eight hundred dollars a person, eight oh eight or something like that. But, at, at that particular time, there was a decision made, and I can't prove whether it's board action or whether it was not, but it, it was, the decision was made to extend.
I've got to pull over, I'm a chair, so, let me take.
To extend that to the people serving as administrative directors and the person serving as superintendent. But nobody else was included in that, my understanding, Angie and maintenance and transportation.
Right.
So, no, and no clerical people were included in it. So, you had, you had a statement from the county commissioners, they were giving supplements to teachers and teacher assistants. You had an administrative decision that moved that over to directors and other people. And, and, you know, I'm suggesting that we eliminate that for this year.
No, that would not affect principal or secretary.
No, that's direct student contact. And, let's see, for officials and co-curricular, that's roughly seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, where's that come from? The president bootlegged.
Well.
I don't want them to come up here and say, all of a sudden, we got to have referees. We don't have any money either, but, oh, yeah.
Well, that's something that people have to work out, I mean, we're probably the only place that I know of that does that. So, everybody else works it out in some way, whether it's, you know, a dollar more to gain, or whether it's, and that's an expensive proposition. I mean, I know just at Franklin High School alone, they have thirty-one sports, and I don't think all of them, you don't have to have an official in God, I mean, cheated or done that.
They wouldn't let V.T. run around, never did take a.
I don't think you have to.
Yeah.
But you.
How is that going to school?
In the lump sum.
So, how much is that for Nantahala? And Nantahala, to be honest with you, that was, was a big concern, because it's going to hurt Nantahala.
Well, they won't be able to raise the, the gate.
Get it out.
I asked the same question, I think there's a different answer. This year, what we're talking about doing, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, Dr. Duncan, we're not saying we're cutting those things out. What we're saying is, is that we're not going to ask for it out of our local funds, because we have some balances built up in our athletic accounts that we can use to pay those things this year, am I right? Am I saying? So, it's not we're saying we're doing away with them.
Each school's athletic.
Yeah, each school's, what we're doing is, we've got monies built up in athletic accounts, that we feel like we can pay for those without having to take it out of our local funds.
This year.
This year. Now, next year, it may be a different story, but this year, we're going to cover it out of that. So, it's not that we're not be, we're not going to have officials or do those things, it's just this year, we've got monies we can use.
We've got to have.
Now, next year, we may be back having some long, hard discussions about, do we have to raise funds and charge for participation? I don't know.
With us funding co-curricular and officials for the, for the number of years that we have, I think the athletic department's probably at high, at Franklin, or Nantahala, I know Franklin can sustain this for a period of time.
For a period of time, so that's all the time.
That's, we're talking about gates paying for this, probably.
Correct, yeah.
I always wondered where it went, because I know we've.
And it may be that, you know, that probably, when you get into looking at ways you might do things differently, I mean, you may, in the co-curricular area, you might have to wear those, you might wear those uniforms, you might not be able to give away things, you might not be able to do some of the things that you might have done previously, you might be able to buy two new basketballs instead of six. I mean, you know, the, the board has been extremely generous to the individual schools about athletics, and, and I wish they, I mean, I wish I felt like that they could be as generous as, as they have been. And they may be able to do that at some point in time, but I think this year is, is a time to move out of that. The, the boots that are purchased for the transportation and maintenance, you know, it's again, it's a one-year proposition there, you know, those people that work in those environments, just have to be sure they have what they need from a safety standpoint, but, you know, maybe that's been an annual allotment, and I think for this year, we just won't make that allotment. That doesn't mean they're going to bear with it. Doesn't mean they're going to have to wear something else, but because over a period of time, we're purchasing each year, and you haven't had that much change in the personnel, they should be fine with that.
I should have got you all the way, I don't know, like, fifty years ago.
Dr. Duncan, I have, I have a question about the New Century Scholars contract reduce.
Okay.
How is that going to affect that program? Is that going to affect it as far as less children being able to go into the program, or is it going to be instructor reduced, or?
What, the way that program, from what I understand, is it was funded under, it was not separately funded, it was all part of a person's responsibility and their job. If that person retired, and that position was not refilled. Then, last year, we came back and said, you know, this is something that directly affects students, we've got a lot of kids involved in it, so we had someone on a contract to work. And what we're doing is saying that that person will now work fewer hours.
So, it won't affect the students?
It won't affect the number of students. And they are, they are joining with other counties a little bit more in providing things like, I think, the banquet they used to provide separately, there was, you know, thirty-nine hundred dollar item or something like that.
Yeah, go get E3, but they ain't been late.
Yeah, they're going in with other counties to have one, because we're not the only ones in New Century Scholars, it's Swain, Jackson, and.
I was just wondering, you know, how the pet would affect.
Yeah, it, it would only affect the number of hours that the person that's receiving that dollar would, would receive. And we've, or have further discussions with that person, but it wouldn't be any intent to reduce the number of students or anything like that.
And also, if there was something else that needed to be in there, there are somebody in the central office that could possibly do something if we needed to, if one of the other ones didn't have time to, correct? There might be.
Well, that, I mean, that's possible, that, I mean, central office people take on a lot of things, a lot of different times, and, and, you know, they may have to take on some of that. But, I mean, this, this program runs, runs smoothly, it's, it's, you know, you, you just, I mean, sometimes the programs that are running smoothly, and you don't hear anything about them, you think, well, it's not functioning. But that's what, because it's functioning so well, that you don't hear anything about it. But, yes, that's, that's possible. But that was reassigned, but when you look at sometimes, they're crucial times in the New Century Scholars, especially the beginning of school, the end of school, and they follow the kids on, from seventh grade on up. The principal travel dollar there, that was money, I believe, eight hundred dollars for all the principals in the Franklin area, and money in the Highlands and Nantahala, for them, for their central office travel and this type thing. Sometimes they come and pick up the mail, sometimes they go deposit money from the office, various things. At Nantahala and at Highlands, there are county cars available for that, you know, they're not BMWs or anything of that nature, I mean, they're fairly used Audibles, but, but they are available. And so, my question.
They're all on the market.
Yeah, and, and my suspicion is, the bank deposits are going to get made, whether you're paying some, you know, been in a situation where you pay people to do that. But like I say, the board has been extremely generous and in good times, and, and you can afford to do that, but, well, that's, well, that's another item. The National Board renewals, we have five teachers coming up for those renewals, again, in, in very bad times, you can afford to do things, but this would be sixty-six hundred dollars. This is just for a person to be paid to do their renewal for that. And going forward from this, you would kind of be out of that business, because if you, if you stop paying for it, then you stop paying for it, as far as I would be concerned. But, you know, I mean, is this going to call somebody not to get their National Board renewal? Well, they get a twelve percent raise, I believe, Mr. Moore, is there? When they, when they do it, and I wouldn't think that this would stand in the way of somebody if they really wanted to do it. They're looking at spending eleven hundred dollars to get maybe four, five, or six thousand, I think they'd probably do that.
It's not this money, it's paying a neck, I would say.
Right. The other thing we put on there that was not, and we added, just added it, was the driver education, somehow we left that off there, and that was twenty-five hundred dollars. We're paying right now, we're buying all the stuff for driver education. The state gives us money, but almost every dime of that, Angie, goes to South Carolina. We always have to put local expense money in. Well, this will help with that a little bit, the actual package costs more than that, but we have students that are taking driver ed and are dropping out. And, same as Brelo signed up to take the online course, and two weeks into it, he got tired of it, and got him left.
You don't get reversed, either.
No, we don't, that money's gone to that spot, because we bought that spot. And, and then next year, we can replace that spot, but we can't.
You lose your money.
I'm waving the white flag, supper's ready, when you're all ready.
Okay, okay.
Except it's a white glove.
What? I'll cover it. Figure out who that kid was trying to run over there.
Driver's training on top of the jump course.
Yeah. He gets your drive and run all over.
So, now, we're, we're down to the possibility of asking the county to increase our budget from last year by one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Whereas before, what we just absolutely said, we want to fund exactly what we have before, which would have been two million, thirty-three thousand.
A couple of questions I had, what about, I know uniforms was up there at one time, a uniform's like thirty-four thousand dollars, or that certainly doesn't affect anything around my students, and even a safety expression, because you can put a uniform on when you're walking to a school. So, I just wondered, would that not be something that would, I know, not the first thing that we produced at our company, I thought that was on there.
Well, it was actually a list from back in, from, from back in February.
So, it's going to have to be on there somewhere.
I mean, you could, that's something you felt like, you could, you could add that, you could add to it.
Okay, yeah.
It depends on local current expense. We give, we keep enough at our level to pay for the maintenance of those garage, and then we give money to the schools. We give them a certain amount per custodian, I think it's a thousand dollars per custodian per student, for the year.
So, just a thought, and then the other question I had was, I know that you spoke about this one time, and I thought about it, that different people have talked about it. Going from block schedule to the six periods, we talked about how that changes from seventy-seven percent to eighty-seven percent with your teachers and less teachers and the same education. Is that something that is not possible to look at? I mean, because like, some of these other, we don't know how, this is something that we may have to continue to do, we're not looking for it to, this may not be a one-time fix, we may have to try.
To address that, in terms of the block schedule, if we lose teaching positions, we may need to go for a six-period day, but if we, if we decide to go to that now, that would mean riffing for folks or sending them home, because we have to eliminate teaching positions that we currently have available to us. I don't think that we want to do it at this point.
I think you use the term same education, it's not the same with the governor's movement now with the career. And we were on the six-period day. With the governor's movement now with the career, and we were on a six-period day, you had students go through Franklin High School, they were in college prep, they may have got to have taken a keyboarding class, they called it keyboarding back then, in the mid-'90s. When we went to, is Mark Sutton in here?
No.
Okay. In the mid-'90s, when we went to the four-by-four, it expanded where the kids could take career classes. And that is an instance now with the governor. I'd hate to think that we would be thinking about something to cut down on the career classes, and then it goes back, you have to let people go. But I think career is the, is the real focus right now, from the governor's standpoint.
But you're right, I mean, if we're needing to have reverses of things like that, then we may have to go to a personal schedule as opposed to a block, just to provide our students with the basic education.
Mr. Judd, I should note this, 'cause I've already divulged, but when did we, when did Highlands High School change to a block schedule? It's been in recent years.
And when I got here, it was about a five block.
Okay.
Seven year olds here went to the full block.
Because I knew that what it had been, okay.
I'll never, I know you've got supper away. Mark Sutton, now one of our principals, we changed in 1996. He was on the college prep route, I think, must've been, 1996, 97, must've been this same year. And he came with the lunchroom, and he said, I get to take a welding shop next year. He'd been covered up with all the college prep classes and was not able to go out of trying to find your, uh, we went to 32 classes, then you've been at 24?
It's a different, I'm sorry, I guess being a non-educator, I'm, I'm not following, I'm sorry. So, 'cause I think you go from having six-period a day to four-period a day.
Four-period a day, but you offer more courses.
At the semester, you change.
Eight a year.
It's eight a year versus six a year.
Okay.
And by offering more courses, we were allowed, the students were allowed to have more, uh, career courses. Again, I go back to Mark Sutton's of the world, Mark Sutton did not have a place in his college prep for having, for those type of credits, for career credits. But it was expanded and opened. Mark Sutton just went through, he said, I can take welding next year, something like that. And we had another student who was our assistant superintendent's daughter, she graduated Franklin High School, and she was in college prep, and she, the only, only course she took in career, I'm gonna go back to keyboarding, was that, that course. And those students weren't allowed, they didn't have the opportunity to take a lot of other curriculum. And some of those students are, maybe, Ms. Walruff, some of them, they may can share that. You got stuck in college prep, you stayed in college prep. You didn't get to go out there and, and venture into the business, at law with computers and accounting programs, you didn't get into that. Yeah, college prep is on one thing and the career is on another, right, Ms. Walruff?
We didn't have too many courses back then.
Right. You were told what you're gonna take.
How many credits does it take to graduate a career right now? 21 or 22?
22 in 2012, 13, 21 last year.
Well, no, there's a couple.
Last track, 21.
21, otherwise it was 20.
32 minus four is 28. Four less maximum.
But at, but at any rate, if, if you have a six-period day and the students take four classes, and they take, well, they take six subjects a year out of four years, that's 24 opportunities they have to take a class. If 21 or 22 of those are state required, the state's not gonna require you to take a foreign language, they suggest it, but it's not required. They don't require you to take any business course, they don't require you to take any, uh, any career technical course. You can take electives, but your electives become very limited. I mean, I mean, I can live with either system, there've been ways to deal with that, but if you change dramatically from a four-by-four block to a situation where students are taking six subjects for four years, you will cut down dramatically on the number of offerings that you'll have in career technical education. I mean, you will, because some students will, if they take physical education four years, that's not required. I think maybe one year is, but, but if they choose to take three years or more years, then that's another credit. And if a student takes four years of band, which none of that's required, you know, that, that eats up their credit, so.
Yes, I didn't have a dollar to spend for.
So if they don't, so if they don't have spots in a schedule to do it, but I guess since we need to talk about this as much as we need to, but, uh, and we're at the point where we need some direction, or I need some direction as to where we want to go with these, with this cut list, I hate to use that word, but that's all I know. If there's something you want to add to it, I've got something else.
Dr. Duncan, I think this is what I was suggesting to the board. Your meeting with Mr. Horton and the vice office tomorrow, I would say go in, get some info from them, what we'll do, there's a lot of questions, and that's good. This is a very tough year, guys, and we're gonna make some decisions that's gonna have an impact for years to come. So we're not trying to rush it. So I'm open for another session if y'all like. Before we have it, we need to have something put together by the 15th of April. So if the board feels like, after he's had a chance, Dr. Duncan brings some more information back to us, I'm totally open to having another work session just like this. I mean, that's what we need to do, 'cause I encourage everyone asks questions, Debbie can put me like I'm, she thinks I'm a squash, and I'm not, and I'm glad that you're asking things, that's great.
Jim, I wouldn't thank you.
I know that, I'm sure. But it's just one of those things, son. I think, no, this is the year where we're making things, let me come up, this year we're having to consider things we never had to consider in the past, ever. In years past, we've been able to go, all right, we've had it, we had the money, we can continue pretty much to maintain the status quo. We can't do that this year. So that's why we're coming to things that's totally, totally different, so.
And at the joint meeting between there, there was discussion, all back and forth. But then one of the things I know that Mr. Corbin said was, well, let's let, we, we talk about this, but let's let the staff get together and hash out some of these things. So if, if there's another joint meeting of them or before it actually goes to the county commissioner, that, and I don't think we're ever gonna be 100% on doing it because nobody likes to do something that they really don't want to do. But I think we'll have to have some consensus, 'cause you'll have to have a budget, and Angie, it has to be balanced. I mean, we can't turn in a budget that says, well, we're hoping for some more dollars, so they won't let us submit one that's not balanced, one way or the other.
So that's what I was suggesting, that we call it, this session to a close with the dinner. Dr. Duncan's meeting there, and then he can bring some more information out, and he can send out where, what you think. And then if y'all want to have another meeting, that's fine. I'd much prefer that everybody gets their questions answered before we make the final call.
Yeah, and there's no, you know, and if, if we meet with them, they say, look, we can already do this, we may come back and say, you know, we have to add.
It could be they say, no, we don't see any increases. And we go back there, this is just, this is another one of our proposals and explorations.
Right.
Mr. Judd, before you break from this, I just wanted to, I mean, I'm sure you've covered it, but one of the things that I found, just sort of being on the periphery of this, and I think that this, why is it I am on the periphery of it? Because you don't, while you're talking about how you have no money, you don't need your, while you're sitting there, you know, like this, so.
But with that, God, he won't.
But, but one of the, there is one of these things that is absolutely vitally important on a legal basis for you to keep, and that's Union Academy. And I know, Dr. Duncan, if you all talked about that.
We have.
Is that something? There are very compelling legal reasons.
I know, we, yeah, we've talked, it's, it's on the top of the list, right?
We're, we're just trying to, to, I mean, the whole idea is that you have to have the alternative, whether it's in a separate school or how you operate, that you have to have some alternative.
So it's either keep it or redesign it all from scratch, and who knows what that means for. You ready to go to court?
We'll have some more time. I think at this time, we're gonna adjourn for our meal. We'll come back over in the gymnasium at 6 o'clock for a meeting. For those who'd like to meet in the stairs, we're planning to have meetings across the hallway in the gymnasium. And, uh, after we hear from Dr. Duncan, we will come back together.
We need to. Ms. Brelo? We'll get back to you.